Good evening and welcome to our special board of select meeting for February 15th at 5:30 for the purpose of discussing the budget and doing some budget reviews. If you all please, and Kathy, since this is your last budget hearing meeting, would you please leave this in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first presentation tonight is on the library or as we all now, culture and recreation budget. So Lisa, now, why don't you go up there because we don't have the microphone and we understand the other night that, and everyone please, if you're talking to me, make sure you have the microphones closed in that far. So Lisa?
Okay, you can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good. Okay, the budget we presented is pretty straightforward. There's nothing dramatic, we're not adding much, we're not taking away much. It is looking at a 4.87% increase, but keep in mind that for the last three years, we've taken a reduction voluntarily because we were able to do that. And this budget still comes in 2% below where we were fiscal year 20. We have cut one full-time position voluntarily. We were able to restructure some of what we were doing, so that'll save on the health insurance line, and we're able to fulfill that job with part-time staff and with a bit of a rearrangement. Inflation is hitting us hard, books are costing more and all the materials, just like everyone else, we're trying to do a good job at holding things to, within a budget, within reason, and we're doing a pretty good time, a pretty good job with that this time.
Okay. Questions?
Yep. Oh.
No. Are we done or?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, a quick update on the library. We're building a new high-tech conference room for the public. Most of that's being funded with the private money that we raise. We've done some outreach with Care and Share to reach people in our community who need our services the most, and we're continuing to partnership with the East Line Historical Society in getting our town's history in a better archives and in a better organization. So those are just highlights of what was on the horizon for us.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Questions for Lisa?
Yes, Lisa.
What's that?
Considering that the Historical Society has decided that they, that the old firehouse isn't going to work for them, you were counting on storage in that area, weren't you, to free up some space?
We were.
And how is that going to affect you?
We, in the back of the library, in the adult stacks, there's closed stacks. Do you know what those are? You roll them and they compact together, compact stacks. We had old magazines back there. We used to keep up to 10 or 15 years' worth of magazines in case somebody wanted them. For two or three years, nobody has ever asked for an old magazine, they're just not going. So we were able to clean out about 2/3 of that and make that space available for the town archives. And that's pretty much the gold standard for archives. You want compact stacks with acid-free boxes that you store things in, so that wasn't available a year ago, it is now, and that factored into the decision for not having the firehouse because that would just be one more building the town has to heat and, you know, provide electricity and whatnot, whereas we have space, adequate space to get started in the library at this point for that.
And could you, I'm sure most of us have been in the library during the past year, but what are you seeing for the, for the future for library use considering that so much can be done at home?
We're seeing a different type of programming. We're doing, we're looking at more of a maker space and meeting rooms. Our meeting rooms are heavily used and we don't have adequate space within the community center in general. So we're looking at different types of programming use that we need, that we don't have right now. Our library looks great, but when you go to other towns such as Branford or other towns our size, comparable wealth, you see what we could have, what we don't, and we're starting to identify some of that. There is a feasibility study going on for the community center with some of the American Rescue Plan funds to look at how the building could be just better used. There's that big part of the lobby to the left, to the right when you walk in, that's not being used for anything, and the thought is that could probably be used for the East Line Historical Society for a museum, and it would get more foot traffic than the firehouse, and it would be open whenever the library's open, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Other questions for Lisa?
Well, so your 4.87 increase is really based on materials and cost increases rather than anything particularly new?
It's based on a modest staff raise, the health insurance. Speaking with our finance director, I've calculated the health insurance at the 12% that was advised at the time, and that's pretty much the bulk of the increase. There's been some incidental increases in our Lion membership and insurance. Some things have gone down. We're not spending $2,000 on custodial supplies anymore. We don't need masks and hand sanitizer and plexiglass and all that anymore. But yeah, the bulk of it is a modest staff raise and health insurance. And again, it, you know, it's still 2% below where we were fiscal year 20. It just looks bigger because we've got, we've decreased our budget steadily the last three years.
Well, keep on cleaning out those stacks for the books because I'm enjoying the $3 books.
Okay, yeah. We, we do raise about $5,000 to $7,000 a year in used books that we take off the shelf and people just pick up for 50 cents or a dollar, so.
I'm in the $3 section now.
All right. Yeah, we bring the higher-priced ones out in the beginning of the winter so people can stock up, so a lot of those are gone now.
Yes, they're in my house.
Okay, well, good. I'll know where to find them if I want to refer to them again.
Thank you.
Bill, you look here.
Yeah, just two quick ones. The health insurance increase, is that a quote or is that just an estimate?
It's an estimate. I don't think we have solid numbers yet. I was told to.
But that's the, that's the town number?
The town number, we changed it to 10%. When she added the data available to give to people, it was.
You need a microphone. Yeah.
Here, use this right now.
So at the time, department heads made their budgets, it was 12% was our estimate. The recent estimate is 10%. So her budget still shows the 12% original estimate.
So we've already got a little area we can cut.
So yeah, so you've got margin there.
Yeah, if it's 10%, we'll certainly lower it to the 10% amount.
And the increased cost of periodicals, is that because you're getting more periodicals or is it because they're just, prices are going up?
I don't think we did increase periodicals because that doesn't sound right. Yes, that's newspaper prices. Periodicals includes magazines, newspapers, and some of our e-magazines.
So you're not getting more, their prices are just going up?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That's my only two questions, thank you.
We've pretty much held everything else steady, as much as we can, and, yeah, actually, that one's being held the same as what we have this year. We saw the prices earlier this year, so, and last year.
Hi, just a quick question. Do you know when the feasibility study would be completed?
I don't. We, the people in the community center, the department heads, we all submitted our choices yesterday to, yeah, to Joe Bagraw for firms that we want to interview. There were six, and so I expect to hear from him at some point in the next week or two about setting up interviews for, for that process.
We wouldn't anticipate probably till mid to late, I'd say mid-fall before we get the results of it because we still have to, you know, go out to the interviews and so forth like that and then come forward and.
Get the proposals.
Yeah.
It's early in the process, but it is underway.
I just wasn't sure where we were in the process.
Because one of, in fact, one of, well, we could talk about it at cap, but there was a couple million dollars in for doing the roof next, next year, but the feeling is, we don't know if there's going to be alterations, you don't want to replace a roof and then cut into it again, so, anyway, so. Any other questions for Lisa?
I just, I noticed on the credit card fees.
Yes.
How did that go? It went way down.
Yes. I'm laughing because that was the one thing I picked up this afternoon at 4:30 as I was rushing out of the office and had to call my associate director who does our accounting. What's up with that is, we joined up, it doesn't line up with the fiscal year for when we signed up for the credit card fees, and we get annual fees and quarterly fees at different rates. And in the past two months, we've gotten quite a few of them, so I'm going to have to move that budget back up. We hadn't spent a lot in that realm when I made this budget back in October, so I'll have to adjust that more toward the end of the year. It'll probably come out to about $1,000 again.
And these are fees that we pay to?
Yeah, to, yeah, the credit card.
So people are paying overdue fines or paying with the credit?
Yep, overdue fines, copier. If they want to buy these used books, we were able to do that, so.
Okay.
Okay. So that one, that one's changed dramatically since October, but that's something I can cope with, you know, in June when we're at the end of the year.
Did you take Venmo yet?
No. We do take PayPal.
Okay, I just, my children made me do PayPal, uh, Venmo.
Yeah, we have PayPal for both the foundation and the library.
I thought Venmo is what, when you're bit by a snake, but that's Venom, but.
Same thing.
Anyway. Larry, do you have anything to, Lisa, if you have anything, Larry, anything? Okay, thank you for supporting, going after support. Okay.
All right, thank you very much for all you do for the town, we appreciate it.
And, you know, looking at that with the book drop-off and so forth like that, all the things that have made it more accessible for the community as well. And I know Rachel Bear loves her little, the book, the library, the take a book, leave a book type of things too.
Yeah.
Around town, which are.
Yep. We don't have a lot to do with those, but I always check them to see what people are dropping off, just out of curiosity when I go buy them.
Yeah, anyway. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. Kathy, this will be your grand finale? How many, and how many performances?
I was gonna say, this will be my 28th.
Okay.
28 budget presentation. So before I start, I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank the town for the 28 years of really enjoyable work that I've done, so if I talk more about it, I'll really cry, so.
Thank you. Well, I think we always, I mean, when the services, and once expanded since you took over, I mean, now you're not only looking after, you know, providing programs and lunches, but you're providing mental health services, checking on the welfare, providing transportation for medical appointments, I mean, basically you've become a full-service agency.
So one-stop shop.
Yes.
I just may, for a sec.
Please.
My first recollection of you was, not in this context, but in Rotary, and we would do the luncheon, the senior luncheon, and we used to do it out behind here. And I remember this energetic person showing up and making sure everything was right, and it was you, and I remember, I remember those days and how impressed I was, so thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you. So, okay, so my budget. So there's a couple of uncertain uncertainties, and that's where some of the price increases are. We're not really sure when the person gets hired, what that pay is going to be. When I budgeted this, I just budgeted it at what I'm currently making, so that may come in a little bit less and may hopefully come in a little less, but, so that is one thing that could potentially change. But because we have a new person coming in and because at some point the ARPA-funded social service person will be coming in, you see an increase in transportation costs. Quite a few years back, I just stopped putting in for mileage. I mean, I just felt like, when I'm running to Stop and Shop or I'm running to the town garage or I'm running to do a home visit, I really just stopped looking for mileage for that. The only time I put mileage in is if I'm going to like a conference and it's in Wallingford or something. But I can't say that a new person coming in is going to have that same mindset. And in particular, the social service position, what I really see that person doing is doing the home visits that I'm now trying to squeeze in my day, so that's why you do see mileage that has increased. And then for some reason, the phone is crazy, and I don't know if there's any, I mean, I looked at what we're budgeting and it's roughly $150 a month for the office phone, and then we have about a $27 a month charge for what we call the One Talk app, which is what I have, my drivers have on their personal cell phones. So if they're outside a client's house and they, you know, want to say, hey, where are you, they can just call on their personal phone, but their personal telephone number won't come up, it'll identify it as a East Line Senior Center Transportation. So those are the two items that are in the phone, but it just seems like, it just continues to go up. But everything else, I have no changes in the number of staff, I have no changes in the number of hours, everything has remained the same. And we've had some decrease in longevity because, you know, my 28 years is going, so that payment is, is going to be gone.
And would you like to talk a little bit about the bus dri, you know, because Roxy is planning on retiring, so, but explain what.
So we're still sort of in, in trying to figure out how we want to do this. We have a full-time position and we, we really have a full-time position, a part-time position, and then a really, really on-call-as-needed, don't-bother-me driver. Roxanne, our full-time driver, is looking to relocate, so now we have that 37 and a half hour block. Do we want to break that up into two part-time positions? Do we want to reduce those hours and keep it a full-time position but at a 30-hour and spread out the hours elsewhere? So there's, there's discussions with Kevin, there's discussions with my driving staff about how we can fix the schedule to maybe accommodate having three drivers that typically drive for us, because right now, when you only have two and one wants to go on vacation, it's tough, because we're pretty busy throughout the day, and then to try to have one person deal with all the transportation needs is just really impossible, so.
One of the things we had talked about was, you know, we left it as the full-time position for the, for a bus driver right now, but when Kathy's successor comes in, take a look at what would best serve the senior center and the people that utilize the service. You know, two part-timers or three part-timers that work on a regular basis might provide a better service because, as she said, and Roxy's sort of, that's sort of unique now, it's hard to get someone, you know, if someone's looking for a career, that's not what they're going to be doing. You might be better off looking for someone who'd be willing to work, you know, on a part-time basis, so we're going to look at that as time goes on, but we're going to leave the funding in for the full-time driver right now.
Right, right. Yeah, we have, we have some retired guys, you know, that, in fact, that's how we got John Halcy, who's our second driver. He's a retired CLMP guy and was doing the inter-office mail for the town, and, you know, he would stop in the office and just, you know, one thing led to another, and so, and that's how our really per diem, on-call, don't call me unless you really need me guy is another local guy, retired guy, and so, but it's really helpful to have at least three drivers that sort of know the routine, know the people, know where things are in town because that, that's a big, that's a, transportation is, it's probably a third of my day, unfortunately, and it's just because, you know, in the morning you're discussing what's going on, and then the day happens and things fall apart and you're trying to revamp it, calls are coming in to book things else, so it's, it's very helpful when you have drivers that understand, okay, this client needs a wheelchair, that means that's 20 minutes at the house getting them loaded, and then we're going to go over from Black Point to, you know, Flanders Health and, you know, just the, the logistics of it all. So if you have a brand-new driver that doesn't really understand any of that, now you're spending an hour with the driver explaining everything before you then are out on the road, so, anyhow. So yeah, that, so it's, it's in progress right now, figuring out what makes more sense. And my suspicion is it's going to be some sort of three part-time positions, but, you know, we're not quite there yet, so.
Questions for Kathy?
If I could.
Yeah, of course.
With respect to the transportation issue, when is Roxy expecting to leave and why do you need to get this new system in place, the three, the two, whatever?
So there's a lot of stuff going on with, with her leaving, so I, we're thinking spring, probably after I leave, so that's why I want to try to have sort of an idea and a platform in place for the person to come in.
And for the budget purposes as well.
Yeah, no, well, I think we'll know before, before May, before the town meeting, so that would be my guess.
Okay. I had a question about the social worker position, and as we know, that was funded through ARPA, and has that person, what is the hiring timeframe?
So what, what we ended up doing, when I finally wrapped my head around retiring and the date, I just felt like, so there's two things. There was my piece, and then there's also the physical location of where we're going to put this person. So we are currently in the, in the unloading of the senior center to try to create an office for, for this person. What we decided was it made more sense for the new person, the new director, to be in on that, that hiring, since it's such a brand-new position, it can wait until the new person is in and then they can have input into the, into that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we certainly still have time, we have, it's been appropriated to '24 and then we have to '26. Those funds won't go away just because we approved them last year, so that gives us flexibility.
The other piece of my retirement date was sort of when big benefit periods end. So for example, I do rental rebate program, that's typically a summertime thing, and I do energy assistance right now, which is really popular, and that's typically fall into, by the time March 1st comes along, I've done the bulk of the application. So that, I feel like April or May, that gives the new director time to come in, get their feet set, you know, feet wet, figure out how this is all going to fit together, and still have time to do those, those big bulk benefit applications that my office takes care of.
Okay. And my last question is on the special revenue fund and the $1,500 in revenue. Could you just summarize that, because in years past, you would sometimes give all that documentation, which was great, but not necessary.
So I didn't provide the special revenue fund, I can certainly give that, you guys, to you. So the 1,500 here, that's, that's the general fund revenue, and that's my, I've sent out an appeal letter, we do that every year for the folks that use our transportation to say, hey, if you can, we'd appreciate a donation, it certainly will not prevent you or prevent us from picking you up, but if you use the service and feel like it's valuable, and if you can give us a dollar, $10, $100, we don't care if you can, excuse me, don't, you know, make a donation, so that's what that money reflects.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I mean, if you want to, if you'd like to provide the other, the special revenue fund, that, that would be fine, but thank, I just want to say thanks too for, obviously for your years of service.
Don't make me cry.
But, yeah.
You'll have time to do that.
I know.
You're going to do that.
You know, and it's awful, it just doesn't aside at the moment, I mean, most evenings, I'm sitting at my desk going, you know, so, anyhow.
Yeah, and, you know, thanks for thinking ahead to how the pieces will need to fall together with a new director too, and it is probably, you know, a good decision to have waited on a, you know, on that social worker to.
Well, and that and also the budget process, I just felt like somebody brand-new coming in, at least this way, the budget's in place, they have some time to see a budget end, a budget start, and get a feel for how money goes in and out, so.
Okay, that's great. Thanks. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Recently, Kathy, local seniors who've been using transportation received a letter saying that they would be limited to the number of rides. Could you go over that with the board?
Of course.
And whether there's any increase reflected in this budget to meet the, the extra need?
So the senior center, senior center offers transportation through the senior center using our senior center vehicles and town employees. In years past, we identified a huge hole in our service, and that's providing medical rides to southern New London County because, and I think I've mentioned this over the, over the years, as Hartford Healthcare's come in and Yale New Haven has come in, medical appointments are no longer situated right around L&amp;M, you still, you know, all the doctor's offices are right there. Now they're everywhere, and we can't, if we, if we send one driver, one vehicle, one client to Groton, that's an hour easily, where the bus is now no longer available in town. So about 13 years or so ago, there was funding available for municipal, municipal transportation for elderly or some, you know, long state name, but it's, it's government, it's a state funding for transportation, and it's about 12 or 13 towns now, that the money that gets allocated to each of the towns, we pool together, and we call it our Dial-A-Ride program, and it is particularly for, or specifically for, medical appointments only in southern New London County. This current year, we were giving people, and it's July 1 to June 30, 36 one-way trips or 18 round trips, and you had to use it between July 1 and June 30, it wouldn't roll over, but that was the amount. Well, more people continue to come in, the funding is totally flat, has been flat for the entire time, so, and a few years ago, we actually ran out of money, like in April, and we're able, we're unable to provide rides for the rest of the year, so instead of doing that, we reduced the number of rides that we're going to provide people. So in January, when the letter went out, if you had used up all your rides, you used up all your rides. If you had booked some rides in addition to the 24, by like January 30, we were going to honor that, but as of January 30, you were going to be limited to 24 rides. So we're trying to at least get more into Lime, Old Lime, and New London Waterford. Smilo is a big place where we go. Parkway South, the medical building on Parkway South is a big place we go, and at least, those are not so far away that we're trying to pick them up within the senior center, and we're looking at if we can break up our, our driving, our, our numbers of drivers, if we can break it up so that now instead of having maybe two on the road, maybe some days I have three on the road, now I can send a vehicle and not affect the local transportation that we're already, already booking. So that's what would happen with that. But the funding, the funding, the funding has been completely flat, has not changed at all. When we do get an increase, it's because we were able to entice another town to join us, so some of the rural communities further north, but, you know, we're pretty much maxed out at the number of, the dollar numbers that we're going to have.
And have you received any cause of concern that they're not able to get the appointments because they've used up their rides?
We would get that anyways, and it's not a lot. A lot, a lot of those clients are the dialysis clients that, I mean, we just, I mean, those are three times a week, 52 weeks out of the year, so, but we haven't really had, we've had a couple of calls, but if we can figure it out, if we can get a way to do it that, you know, we're not going to Colchester, you know, then, you know, we try to work with them to get people to where they need to go, but we haven't really had that many.
But your budget does not reflect any increase in time to address this problem, which I think is a big problem.
Okay.
It's not, it's not about people who are able to get into a car and have a neighbor drive them. We've got many now who are wheelchair-bound and they have to have the vehicle with a lift.
That's true.
And from my own experience, having to use curtain services or some of those services for somebody that's on a very limited income who's 85 years old, this is, it's a huge expenditure.
Absolutely.
And I don't think that any of us would want on our conscience that someone was not able to get a vital service that's needed. So in order to address this need, could you come, could you come back to us with a potential figure?
Of course.
Of what your budget would need to be increased to reflect this?
Okay, sure.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Would this be unlimited transportation?
No, no, we're not talking about the Dial-A-Ride, so we're talking about the senior center transportation.
No, yeah.
Okay, all right. So I, I think, if I'm understanding correctly, you know, we would have a limited service area, holy crow, this is another reason why I have to retire, but, so we would have a limited service area, but maybe, for example, we go to New London Waterford on Mondays, well, maybe we can add in another day that we would go and be able to bring people to Smilo, L&amp;M, the Sound Community, the Community Health Center, Shaw's Cove, things like that. So yes, I can do that and put a schedule together that would show them.
Okay, so we're, we're not talking about people who want to use the bus to go grocery shopping?
No.
No, medical is what I'm talking about.
Right, that, grocery shopping, that's something because it's local, if we, if for whatever reason we can't accommodate them on the day that they, we would typically accommodate them, we can figure out a way to get them to the grocery store. Same thing with getting to the pharmacy, the bank, all that other stuff.
Yeah, so make sure we have the scope of this for medical.
Yeah, so I, I'm looking at like Hall's Drive in Lime, like across from Big Y, that would be as far as we'd go that way, and then probably New London, and just that area, just because I really, because once you start getting further out, you know.
And my, and my idea was that this should be, this increase should be devoted to.
Medical appointments, okay.
Okay, I think that helps, yeah.
Yep, yep, okay.
Okay, other questions for Kathy?
I have one. On line 506, the program subsidy, it's, it's decreasing.
Yes.
I don't really understand that.
Okay, so a few years ago, we, we moved the program line, which is the 415, the 10415, that was where I paid all my instructors out of the general fund. We moved that into the special revenue account. So when we did that, we put in a program subsidy so that as we were making the transition, if things, if, you know, I was off on our revenues, that I didn't have to stop running programs because I didn't have a way to pay the instructors. So that has been coming down, and I foresee that probably being gone next fiscal year. And I, I foresee that probably being gone next fiscal year. I'd be more comfortable saying we could eliminate it now if I was continuing on. But if we have a new person coming in, I, I just feel like if we can keep a cushion there for the new person to come on, and then we can get rid of it.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
How many people do you service now?
I have that information for you.
You had it last year.
Let's see. So, last year, so our, our unduplicated attendance statistics, so, and I'll explain, I may have explained this before, but July 1 to June 30th. When we do an unduplicated stat, that means Mrs. Smith comes in and she takes yoga three times a week, fifty-two weeks out of the year. She's one, that's one, one unduplicated person. Mr. Brown comes in, does his taxes with us. We only see him March 15th, that's it. That's another unduplicated, all right? So that's, that's what that is. So we're now at, so as of twenty-one, twenty-two, we're at one thousand ten. When, when we were jamming, right before COVID, eighteen, nineteen, we were at sixteen ninety-one. So we are coming back from the, the hit that we took with COVID. And the other piece of that is coming back from COVID, where we were jamming people into rooms wherever we could find space. We're being more thoughtful about where we're putting people and how close they are, and just trying to have a, a better sense of how a program runs, and so. So we're seeing that, so for daily, daily attendance. So we're about seventy people a day that we're seeing, but that's average, you know, that's. Does that answer your question, Bill?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I, I'm looking, I said the same thing last year. I'll say it again this year. I think your budget compared to how many people you service and the need to service, like Roseanne said, the people that can't service themselves, you know, elderly people, sometimes that live alone.
That mostly live alone.
Right, and, and, so no, I didn't, I, I would be more inclined to say that to do more would be beneficial to the town as opposed to doing, doing less.
Okay, thank you.
So.
And just to back on what Bill said today, we're seeing more and more people come into Town Hall looking for assistance that are seniors and so forth today. Two people came in today, Kathy, I, I, one may have come your way, maybe not. I don't know if they did or not. And another one came in looking for tax relief and so forth like that. The assessment office is great in telling them what to do, and they all, they all say the same thing. But we've, Kathy Wilson's helped us in the past, we, we hear that too. And now with TBCCA also offering some assistance in, for utilities, water and sewer as well, a couple there today. So we're seeing a lot of needs, not only in the medical area, but in the, you know, basically people on the fixed income.
Yeah, that, the, in particular, the, well, the oil prices in the fall, and then the electric prices now.
And, well, I'll point this under, so you'll hear this too. I was at a Cogni today, and TBCCA has got some additional funding to help out.
Oh, good.
And that area, so, some good news in that area, but, anyway. So, anything else?
So you're looking for me to spend more money, is that what I mean?
Well, like, you know.
I'm getting mixed signals now, come on.
I would say that I, I look forward to increasing the services to the citizens. Spending more money isn't necessarily necessary, but it may be necessary because.
Well, and I think when we get the, when we get the social worker in, that will help.
Yeah.
And, and, yeah, I mean, certainly that.
But the, the day-to-day kind of drives and stuff and taking people to the hospital, you know, it's what a lot of citizens need.
Right.
Well, you know, this, since, this is, this will be budget-related, but since Jerry and his people, a couple members of his commission are coming up next. Tracy Collins has looked into the merger and found out what towns are doing is aren't putting youth services with Parks and Rec. They're forming youth and family services, which is basically cradle-to-the-grave type of thing. And, you know, here again, have a budgetary impact that we have to look at. And it's something I think we need to, to explore because the needs of some of the, you said, the people that are alone, they need some assistance, and that's what a social worker will help out with. And, you know, it'd be nice to say, well, we got to get done before the budget. No, let's do it right and take our time in moving forward. And I think one of the things Kathy and I have talked about too is if we had three part-time bus drivers, it would free up some funding for other things as well. Because three part-time, and you hate to say this, that means, you know, they'd be retired people and not looking for, you know, a big income. But we'd save the money on the benefits as well, you hate to say that, but we would. And it would possibly let us look at some other funding too. So, you know, with this year, you know, and if Roxy retires, it's not like we're eliminating her position.
Right, right.
She's taking off, so, you know, make a better service and yet be able to provide more funding.
And that brings me to something else. So the three vehicles that the senior center has, so I wrote a grant March of twenty twenty-one for a new vehicle, was supposed to receive it in the late summer of twenty twenty-two. We have yet to receive it. So we still have our two thousand ten, not really on the road, because we're not trying, we're not using that daily, but it is a backup vehicle. But with this discussion, then, we're also looking at, well, should we keep that two thousand ten as a, as a fourth vehicle and really be, keep it in the same job situation that it currently is in as a backup vehicle? As something goes in for maintenance, unexpected or scheduled, now you have a backup vehicle to at least go on the road and get somebody from A to B. I don't know that that's going to actually happen. The two thousand ten vehicle is not in the best body shape, so, and we've.
Neither am I.
Yeah. We have watched the garage about it, and we'd have them take a look at it. It's roadworthy, but it's not pretty. And it's, you know, so, but we are looking at that too, that, you know, that, that to have three vehicles on the road most days, again, makes, it's a whole scheduling thing, is when you have, one of those vehicles goes off to do the routine maintenance or unexpected maintenance, now what do you do with the hole that you have? So that's why we're sort of looking at keeping that on. We're not sure yet, because I don't know if that's going to make sense.
And you know, the thing is Kathy resolves all these things, you know, I rarely hear from Kathy about concerns. It just gets done, and it always has. I don't, we won't make you cry.
Yeah, please, yeah.
We won't do that.
So before we move to the next budget, I just say that since the, since its inception for the Commission on Aging, that's been my exhibition. So that's thirty-five years.
Wow.
A point. And I'd also like to recognize Dr. Rittner, who's here this evening. This is his last term as chairman of the board, and we'll miss him greatly. As always, a great leader. And I think this commission is probably the best example of a small commission in town that does a lot on a limited budget to help a large number of people that really need it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's almost crying now.
Am I done? Am I dismissed?
You're not done, you, you may.
May I be dismissed for the evening?
I, I would never, ever question whether you, if you want to leave here more than well, you can. And I wish you weren't, but I don't want to make you cry.
All right, thank you.
I've done enough lately, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, do you have anything you want to say before we go on, or?
No, I'm just delighted to see the two all recognized with a gem, we're losing.
Yes. We do.
Kind of delighted to work with, and she's, the new person comes in, is going to have a tough job to fill.
Oh, thank you. And Dr. Rittner, for those who don't know, we have a highly regarded educational system now. Dr. Rittner was the superintendent that elevated it to where it is today. So thank you for what you've done for our community as well, John.
I'm not going to cry now.
Thank you, John. All right. Okay, Jerry, you're welcome to come up.
So I think the information that you have in your notes is a little bit updated. This is an updated copy that has feedback, additional feedback from the Parks and Rec Commission.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, the board, the first selectment's proposed cuts are the same. What he's talking about is the department head numbers, the, the proposed budget. Those are the numbers they've, they've, that have changed. Not the, the last column all the way to the right, the first selectman's budget. That still matches the work papers you got.
Right, because my just.
Do we keep this?
Yeah, hold on to that.
Or is this different from what you gave us?
They're different because he changed the department head numbers. Everyone but Kevin, Kevin has a copy of it, all right?
Are they, are they changed throughout or just in one particular area?
So after the first election proposed, then the department head.
Right, but is it, is it?
It's some of the salary.
Oh, so you're talking about.
Okay, but.
You're talking about this one right here, department head requested, that's what changed.
Okay.
None of the Kevin's numbers have changed?
Got it.
Just there, the original request.
So this change, so this is the most relevant one that we can still look at, basically.
Today, then, because I see a twelve seventeen twenty-one.
I kept the original one in, I don't want to.
Okay.
Understood, no, okay, just wanted to say.
Okay.
I kind of just consider it supplemental.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine.
The numbers are still, you know, Kevin's numbers are still Kevin's numbers.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, thank you very much. I'm Jerry Locken, I'm the director of Parks and Rec. And with me here tonight, we have the chairman of the Parks and Rec Commission, Tom Beebe, and also Commissioner Pat Larkin. So the, in, in summary, I guess, there aren't many changes to this. My original request when I met with the finance director in the first selectmen, we did propose adding some positions to the, to the budget. And after review from the commission, the Parks and Rec Commission, it was decided that we didn't want to make that part of the official department request. So that's the reason that we have kind of a difference there. The, the department request is, is actually up about eight and a half percent. And most of that is due to personnel increases. And the primary driver of that personnel increase is the upgrade of a youth and family position, the prevention wellness and mentoring coordinator. We want to make that a full-time position. Right now, that is a twenty-eight hour part-time position. We're proposing to make that a full-time position. And it gets a little bit complicated in, in the sense that half of the funding for that position for the next year would come from ARPA. So we're funding half of a full-time position, adding that to the budget. So that's, that's kind of the change that we're adding to the, to the personnel. And of course, there are obvious increases due to union contracts and, and minimum wage going up and things like that. So, in terms of things that are different in this budget, one of the things that we, we changed is to contract out the cleaning of public restrooms in, in the parks. And to hire, hire a contracted service to do that. Right now, that's being done with our park maintenance staff and, and sometimes seasonal staff at the beach. But if we contract that out, we actually, for the parks portion, we free up our parks maintainers to go ahead and, and focus on mowing the grass, doing the string trimming and, and some other things like that that they're more trained to do rather than cleaning the restrooms. We've also had a hard time hiring seasonal maintainers. So our park staff has been a little bit struggling to, to make do with, with limited staff. And contracting out that restroom service would, would help alleviate that, that pressure and allow those, those, again, those maintainers to do the things that they're really good at doing. And at that point, I guess, I, I could also talk about, a little bit about our special revenue fund. Like the Council on Aging, we do have a special revenue fund where we put money from the programs, from the beach operations, parking passes, and youth services operates in a special revenue fund. And COVID was, was, you know, almost, yeah, was, was very, was very bad for the, the special revenue fund. And we lost about two hundred thousand dollars of fund balance. And in a, in a special revenue fund, as our finance director will tell me, we can't operate in the red. You know, if, once we're, once fund balance is gone, you know, the, the spigot turns up and, and we would risk losing beach operations, recreation programs, youth services, all of that if we were to lose all of our fund balance. So that is a, a primary concern of ours to, to shore up the special revenue fund, to make it stay in the black and to, you know, build back some of that fund balance over time that gives us sustainability in our operations and, and could potentially even do things like funding. Like I, I guess one of the things that I've heard lately is the replacement of the raft at the beach. Right now, the raft that we had out there was not serviceable anymore. And right now, we don't have enough in our fund balance to kind of replace that. So ideally, what we would like to do is develop that fund balance to a, to a more sustainable level where we would be able to take care of those kinds of purchases and to ensure the, the continuity of programs. So I guess with that, Kevin and.
Any questions for Jerry? Ann?
Yes, you talk about overtime for full-time parks and recreation maintainers. Can you just address that a little bit?
Say that again?
You were talking, I see here, it's, it looks like twenty thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars overtime for full-time parks and recreation maintainers?
Correct, yeah. Our, our maintainers work Monday through Friday, but often during the, the peak season in the summer, those maintainers do come in and maintain the parks on the weekends, collecting trash, you know, setting fields up for games, those kinds of things as they're scheduled. So we, we do have overtime in, in season.
And then one other question. It says there's fourteen thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars for weekend staffing at the community center. I wasn't sure if that felt, fell under like the Public Works.
Correct.
Like with Joe Bregaw.
Yeah, I think that, that's a conversation we had, that, that, that funding would be better placed in the Public Works budget. It was previously, or in the current year, actually, it's in the special revenue fund budget. So the special revenue fund is, is paying for custodial staff on Saturdays at the community center. And as, as one means of, of trying to make the special revenue fund sustainable, since it's a town building, paying for it out of the general fund like we do other town buildings, that was kind of the rationale behind choosing to, to shift that over. And there were two options of doing it. One was to put it in a park and rec, general funded budget, the other was to put it in Public Works. And I think that the decision is to put it in Public Works and which is.
It's in the Public Works budget now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Moving forward.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, did, which item did you say for the out, for the contractors that you have to do the cleaning work? Where does that fall under?
All right.
Three fifty.
Park field maintenance.
Park field maintenance.
Halfway down.
So that's.
Yeah, three fifty. Yep.
So those hours that they spend doing the cleaning, don't they offset hours that, the people that used to do the cleaning, aren't they available now for other things?
That's exactly it, yes. We, we, we reduce the seasonal staff. If you looked at the seasonal staff for the park maintenance, we were down by about twenty thousand dollars roughly. And the contractual cleaning of the restrooms is up about twenty thousand dollars. So just, just as you said, we are intending to free up our parks crew to focus on those skilled tasks that, that park maintainers are good at doing and, and contract out that service for the restrooms.
Jerry, is, how many months is that service for? Because we had talked about that.
Yeah, we had talked about including that for the, the primary summer months. So the, I, I would say that the key season, I guess you'd have to, even right now, with, with the weather like it is, the, the boardwalk and other places are seeing a lot of use. But really, the key season, I would say probably, you know, from June through September would be the really heavy use seasons.
Is that what the cost would be for the four months?
It's, it's eleven hundred dollars per location per month. So I guess if, if we were to reduce the, or limit the service to just those four months, I think the, the amount in here would be. I think the amount in here would be the entire amount, but, so I guess it would be, I guess, I'd have to get my math out, but, yeah, four months times $1,100, times however many restrooms would be the total. I think it's, it may be about $10,000 perhaps.
Okay. Okay. One of the things, well, you know, that is a major problem on weekends, because the bathrooms are used so heavily, you can't ask the kids to go in and clean them. For Lock and Burris, because of the soils and the material in there, obviously. So, we're looking at this right now, so looking at the best way to do it. It may be too expensive, we may have, you know, one of the things we've looked at too is, is it possible to bring in somebody on overtime? It may not be $1,100 a month, but we have to look at a better way to clean our bathroom facilities.
You said 11K per location?
1100 per location per month.
Okay. That math works better.
Yes.
11K times four is 44K, two locations is 80. Now wait, this is a-
1100.
Okay. I'm good.
I had a question. On the lighting, what was the reason for the jump for the athletic lighting?
Yeah, we are looking to, it's actually kind of a relatively small expenditure, about $1,400, to get the ability to turn the lights on and off with an app on a smartphone. So, right now, we program those lights, and they come on and off, or if they need to stay on a few minutes longer, or come on a little bit earlier, we'd have to send somebody down to the park to actually program those lights. And, yeah, we actually charge people who rent those fields light fees, so trying to maximize that, and to turn the lights on for no longer than they really have to be, is something we're trying to do a better job of.
So that's part of that 6,000, is it 1,400 to make that change?
Yes.
And then, once you make that change, will we not, is that a one-time expense, or?
There's a small amount that is a monthly recurring fee for having that service. So, yeah, it's a monthly service after you install the units. But, yeah, so the total for the year is about $1,400, so it's not a huge expense.
The schools did that a few years ago, and it has saved them a lot of money, because the couple, whoever it is, instead of having to turn them on on their phone, they turn them off, and turn them on, it saves a lot of money. Because they're going to have to call somebody to turn them on, or longer, you're paying the overtime cost.
You're saving the labor of someone doing that.
Yes. And if, you know-
More efficient for electricity.
If someone's mad at, okay, in the middle of the game, oops, I'm sorry, the lights went off. So.
Okay.
Other questions for Jerry?
I did actually have one other question, I forgot. Coyote deterrent, do you have anything in your budget for coyote deterrent? I know I go to the park down at Perez, at Bride Brook, Brett, Perez, and all the soccer games and stuff, right? The kids leave orange peels or whatever on the ground, so there's coyotes there fairly often. And I know that we don't want to shoot them, or trap them, or do anything like that, but there are things that you can do to discourage them.
Yeah, we don't have anything specifically in there for coyote deterrent. Yeah, and I guess the other deterrent, that's a common question, is, you know, geese deterrent, you know, like the geese using those fields.
The coyotes are-
Well, they used to put the coyote things up to try and scare the geese away.
Right, yeah, so, I guess the coyotes do scare the geese away, but I don't think it works in reverse. But, yeah, I think, you know, your point is well-taken, that doing whatever we can to minimize the attractiveness of parks, you know, with being careful with our litter control and things like that, to minimize the desirability of the parks for wildlife is, yeah.
Yeah, and while you're up here, Jerry, I think, if there's no other questions, we ought to take a look, it's, we talked about some capital projects for, that Jerry has in here, it would probably be a good thing, it's on the second page, if you go back to SFP, it's kind of small print, but it's in there. He has asked for-
It's in the handout, too.
Oh, it's in the handout, too? Okay.
Yep. So, yes, in terms of capital items, there are, the highest priority item I think we have is the replacement of two zero-turn mowers, that are replacements for units that are no longer in service. So, that, the next item is an automated line painter that would-
You need to explain that one, too. I think that would help them understand why, that's $45,000, but I think you explained very well to us how that would possibly help things out, so.
An automated line painter is a, you know, I guess if you're used to seeing a robot, it's a robot that goes out and paints very straight lines at very, you know, centimeter accurate out on a field. So, right now, when our parks guys go out to lay out a soccer field, or a lacrosse field, or any other field, they take string out there, and, you know, have one guy on one end, and, you know, the other guy, and you measure out the distance, and you do all that. It takes a lot of time and energy for our parks guys to do that. This machine would go out, you program it, and you fill it with paint, and it goes out and paints the field. And that saves a lot of time, and again, if we have this, you know, inch or centimeter perfect accuracy of laying out these fields, over the course of the time that this robot would be used, about 10 years of service, you save a lot of time for the parks crews, so they can focus on, you know, the other things like string trimming, and mowing the grass, or taking care of, you know, fixing, you know, broken things at parks, or all those kinds of things that, that right now are not necessarily being taken care of in a timely way. So, yeah, there's a huge, it's an investment in time savings that we can, you know, benefit from for about 10 years.
Yeah, one thing, the thing that we discussed, too, is, over the years, the police department, the Samuel Smith House, Brookside Farms, the new park, more and more has been added to what they need to do, and, you know, parks are, and our grounds always look so good, which is what we want to maintain, so this is one thing that, you know, I, what did you, you told me what, how much time would be saved, too?
Oh, yeah, this machine lays out a field in about 15, 20 minutes, where our parks crew would take a couple of guys, a couple of hours to lay out the field. So, it's a huge time saver, and I didn't even mention that, it saves on paint, too. I mean, it puts down, you know, the right amount of paint perfectly, you know, it's not hand-controlled or anything else, it puts down, the paint goes further, it's just, it's a really nice tool for efficiency of operation.
One of the, I was just going to say, one of the drums that I've been beating for years and years, is that we should try to take equipment like this and make it available for Port of Ed as well as the town. If we can come up with shared resources, that would be a great way to have them save money, too.
That's a great point. I mean, this machine is perfectly portable, and can be used in any area. So, like, yeah, the fields in back of the high school needed it, that's certainly something that we could, you know, loan it to them, or, you know, put it up there and paint those fields and let them-
Yeah, so how many times a year are you required, are we required to repaint these lines?
We repaint the lines at least once a week. I mean, when you lay a field out, I mean, the grass grows, you mow it off, and the line, you've got to repaint the line. So that's, it's a constant, throughout the sports season, we constantly paint and mow.
Okay.
So we're talking a week, about 10-person hours at least that we're saving?
So, potentially, the biggest time savings is going to be when we initially lay out the fields. Sometimes, if the lines are still visible, or to a degree after the mowing, we can just, you know, we have somebody with a manual line painting machine, we can go out and paint over the lines that already existed. But once the lines disappear, that's where your big time savings come. But repainting fields, in this case, you could have a robot working on one field, and a parks guy on the next field, repainting lines that are still partially visible to make them more-
So basically, spring, summer, fall, not winter really, for those fields?
Right, yeah, this is primarily a spring, I'd say a spring and fall. We don't really, there aren't a lot of field sports in the middle of the summer, so primarily spring and fall.
Okay.
And also, too, going through it, if you look to the zero-turning mowers, it shows 15, but I think we agreed to have both in there, because I told Jerry what were his priorities, and he said the zero-turning mowers, because a couple of them were auctioned off a couple of years ago, and the automated line painter, and the mason dump truck and the vehicle for the beach and recreation staff, we figured, he agreed that, you know, he'd like to have them, but that, if something had a weight, those could wait, too.
That's correct.
And also, when we get to the line painting, you know, he mentioned lights and turf for Parets Park at Kesserfield, so, you know, the line painter was a whole lot less expensive than a turf field with the lines already painted on it, so.
Correct.
So, any other questions for Jerry?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead, Roseanne.
Roseanne, go ahead.
Under the capital improvement, $250,000 for Darrow Pond, construction of phase one. How many phases are we talking about?
The master plan has not yet been fully completed, but, you know, we expect that, you know, it could be probably two phases. That's at least an initial kind of estimate, but it really depends on what the results of the master plan are, and that is not done yet, and, you know, I guess if there are, you know, we anticipate the plan being done and the need for the funding, but, you know, in the deliberations of the, you know, the board of selectmen, yeah.
In our first meeting, we had, that was something, we said, you know, that hasn't even, it's going to be a while before that's finalized, so that was not something-
Right.
Considering the challenges of the budget this year, we're-
Correct.
That won't be in the budget this year, nor will the-
Pickleball?
No, pickleball courts, we have gotten a lot of feedback from members of the community, they would love to see the pickleball courts. And here, again, it's used, as I think most, I don't play, but I, there were a group of people here a couple of weeks ago, six, and they are looking very forward to it, so.
Yeah, the commission has heard a great deal of feedback from the pickleball community as well, yes.
So, going back to Darrow Pond, so this is phase one. When phase two comes about, would you anticipate that that would be roughly the same amount of money?
I guess, you know, the answer to that question really depends on the results of the master plan. So I really don't hazard a guess at what a phase two might encompass. And to be honest with you, even the phase one is still not fully developed. I mean, the master plan has not been approved yet, so, you know, that's, this is kind of an estimate of what it might be. So, as the first selectman said, it's probably best to hold off on that while we wait for the results of the master plan, and look at it once more clarity is achieved.
Well, I think it's a good idea to give us a heads-up as to what we might be looking at-
Right.
And thinking about what things we, both we agree that we would like to prioritize. So, the two-zero, the two-zero-turn mowers that are no longer in service, you said those were auctioned off?
Correct.
And so what have you been doing in the meantime?
Well, doing with, doing with less, yes. We're not mowing all of the areas that perhaps need to be mowed on a regular basis. So, yeah, these two-zero-turn mowers would allow all of our parks crew to, you know, to keep up with the mowing at all locations, you know, the beaches, the athletic fields, the, you know, parks, all those kinds of things, so.
And these are used year-round?
Uh, no, no, they're used, you know, spring through fall, they're not, they wouldn't be used right now.
Okay, that's it for me.
Okay, so, just a quick question. This automated line painter, you said it was portable, like, how heavy is it? Do you know?
It's on wheels and whatnot, so you could, you know, easily put it onto a, you know, a trailer. I don't know if it weighs 100 pounds or 150 pounds or something, but it's not, it's not something that, yeah, it's something we can move easily.
I was just thinking, if you're going to be using it, also, the board of Ed was going to try to be using it, you want to make sure that you're going to-
Something we can easily move up there with a trailer, yeah.
And then, the other question is, is it difficult to program this robot?
Of course, the salesman says no.
Because what you don't want is, like, only one person who knows how to do it, and it only works, you know?
I guess the advantage, though, is once a field is laid out, it's in there. You don't have to kind of reprogram the machine every time. When you put the machine on the field, it knows where it is, and it knows what field, and you hit go. So, it's, you know, if you did it last time, it'll do the same thing this time.
Okay, so it's that first programming that needs to be set in the machine?
Correct.
I'm sure, has the promise training is included?
Well, that's what I was going to say. I have trouble with a coffee maker, so I'm like, I'm thinking about this, going, yeah.
There's another robot that programs it.
Yeah, I'm thinking of the guy that's at Stop &amp; Shop that follows you all around there, that's pretty sophisticated.
Kevin, one thing, I, I'm sorry, I could just add one more thing that, related to the special revenue fund that I missed mentioning, that there are a couple of things that the special revenue fund does now that we'd like to, that the, you know, the commission would like to see put on pause. One is a $10,000 a year contribution from the special revenue fund to the general fund. Initially, I think that made sense when there was a fund balance to do that, you know, you don't want the special revenue fund just making money and charging everything to the general fund, but in this case, you know, paying that bill would help us to, or not paying that bill would help us to build fund balance. And the other pieces were some grants that we get from the state for youth services. Those are put into the general fund, and we pay expenses for youth services out of the special revenue fund, like our drop-in teen center, our counseling and things like that, out of the special revenue fund. We don't receive revenue to offset those, so hopefully, you know, if, you know, if the budget allows it, to put that, those grant funds into the special revenue fund to reimburse the special revenue fund where the actual expenses are. So, the other part that, you know, just in full transparency here, we are talking about adding a, you know, this full-time position, and so those state funds for youth services, you know, there is an argument to be made that the general fund, you know, is paying that portion of youth services, too. So, you know, we've got youth services in the special revenue, and youth services in the general fund, so, you know, it's fully within your purview to kind of decide where that revenue goes, just putting that out there. And it's a bit of the same kind of a question on Cheney leases at the Cheney Park. We have expenses in the special revenue fund that we pay for, you know, the restrooms down at Cheney, the beach staff down at Cheney, and loss of parking revenue that we allow those people at Cheney to park their vehicles. So, that's just another kind of a thing where you could, you know, the board of selectmen, it could make a decision on that, where that revenue goes, so.
Still have a-
Yeah, Anne has-
Got a question, too, thanks. Let's go back to the councilman position or positions funded by ARPA. So, in the previous administration, they were, this is where they arose from, and they were funded then by ARPA. And then, under this administration, the subcommittee of the, of this board recommended, and this board approved, and the town approved, to continue on, but to continue on with the two positions, that's my, that was my understanding. There was a, when I served, I was chair of that subcommittee, and Anne was a member of that as well, Anne Cacciallo, and the approval was 55,000 for the coordinator position-
Correct.
And 20,000 for that part-time position. So, can you explain to me, I don't, I'm not sure I see where that $20,000 is going for that counseling position?
Sure, that is in the special revenue fund. Youth services, counseling services are paid for out of the special revenue fund, and we do have ARPA funding that's kind of-
That's remaining in there?
That, yes. I will say that in the current year, we're spending, we anticipate overspending the amount on counseling services. That person is working full-on, we only have one counseling position that's being used, but it has a full caseload, and we have a waitlist for others. So, the need for counseling services is greater than the ARPA funding. So we will, we will use all of the ARPA funding this year, and probably need to subsidize that from other fund balance in the special revenue fund to kind of pay for what the current need is.
Okay. And then the other position, the coordinator position, is what you're referring to?
Correct.
Here, okay, I just wanted to be clear on that, okay. And just generally, we've spoken about pickleball courts, and I know there's, you know, it's quite the sport at this time, and- this time. And it is... And as a tennis player, I'm just happy that there will be separate pickleball courts. I have to be honest about that. But, just wondering, what is the thinking on financing this? Is it... Will it be a bonded project?
Oh, it'll be in the capital plan.
It'll be in the capital plan. I mean, I see it in the capital plan. I don't see my color coding of what fund it is, how...
Oh, no, we don't have that yet. No, that would be... Yeah, there's no funding for it right now.
So, discussion on that? I mean, just the sense of that? Or is it...
I don't have a... That's a discussion we have not had.
So, and if you go to the CIP tab in your workbook, I think it's CIP or Capital Projects, whatever it's called. Don't hold me to the name. There's a tab in there with this year's capital projects.
Right.
All the way to the right, it's broken out 20-year bond, 10-year bond, five-year lease or cash.
But it's not color-coded.
It's not color-coded, but it is coded by the financing source.
That's fine.
And then, just one other point I'd just like to point out with the... While you were all talking, I was updating the ARPA numbers.
Okay.
So, there's... Just so everyone knows, there's four accounts in ARPA. There's the original $55,000.
Right.
And then, there's 20... $55,000 for mentoring coordinator, prevention mentoring coordinator, $20,000 for clinical therapist counseling, youth services. Of that money, we've spent the first $75,000, we have spent 49.5 of that. So, there's still some money there. And then, once that money's fully expended, there's a dash, you know, second tranche of $55,000 for another mentoring coordinator and $20,000 for youth services.
Okay. So, let's get to know.
So, we're gonna be in good shape for next year.
Okay. Very good.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions for Jerry? Just really quick, going back to talking about parks, youth services and how best to move forward this. I was able to find out, and Roseanne, you'll like to hear that, you know, would going into a youth and family services type thing open us up to more grants? And yes, it would, provided we have on staff, Roseanne, a grant writer. So...
Thank you. Finally.
So, but, you know, so I'll be talking about that a little later tonight.
It's only been 10 years that I've been trying to get one.
Yeah. We'll be... Under my comments tonight, I'm gonna talk about... A little bit about that, too, because Kevin and I have talked about, you know, our side, we're looking okay with funding for the year and not looking... We're looking at possibly, you know, maybe 12 hours a week, $300 a week. And then, obviously, the person come in, and that would be their job. And there are people out there that do this, you know. So, we'll talk more about that a little later tonight. So, Tom, do you have... Pat, do you have anything you'd like to add?
We had a great discussion at our commission meeting. We wanted support for the budget and then submitted, and we were behind Jerry.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, I think the... Huh? Yeah, I do have it. Moving on to Servant, what that one... No, I just have to get to the thing. 115, Services to the Community. There's a few items on here that, you know, Bill, you mentioned last year, did we get everybody? So, you know, I went out and talked to a lot of people and so forth. And the additions here are, first of all, under TBCC Blue Door, as we heard about them. They also got the... So, they're looking... I put them for $2,500. I mean, it's obviously providing quite a resource to the community right now. And as Rena said that night, their job is to try and reduce the stress on caregivers and to provide immediate resource for people. They ask for a $50 deposit. If they don't have it, that's okay. But, it's a great resource, and it's benefited so many people in the community. And Giving Garden, I met with Bruce Cohen the other day. He came in and said, what more do they have to do? Do they need to be here? I said, no, their product. And I think you were at the... And we both had the ribbon cutting for the... They had a ribbon cutting several months ago. And what they're doing, they're having students come over. They're, you know, trying to cast that, you know, as big a net as possible. So, we put that down there. And I've also... Rita Rivera, who is active in Main Street, the library, not the children who examine that, she's gonna reach out to that. I've asked her to see if she can help them out, too, because Rita makes things happen as far as helping identify, you know, ways to fundraise and that. So, they're looking at doing that. So, those are the two things. And the one down there, you'll see Veterans Rep Mileage Reimbursement. That's Brian Burge. Brian drives veterans to several different doctor's appointments and so forth like that. So, this would just be a place holder for mileage for things he does to provide service to the veterans in our community. This wouldn't be providing... For instance, he goes every day to... One of the things he does on a daily basis is put up the flag. No, that's not what that would be for. This would be for direct services to helping veterans and his out-of-pocket expenses for mileage and so forth. So, those are the items in there. And I think you see everything else in there. And is there anyone I may have missed?
Could you also go back to ones that we've been supporting for many, many years?
Yeah.
See if they wanna get bumped up? I mean...
No, everybody, you know, we basically have communications with pretty much all these. They'll send us a letter requesting so forth. So, they stayed level funded. Nobody was reduced. There was a couple that asked... No, I don't think anybody... No, those are in a different area. That one for... That came... Yeah, okay. Yeah, that was in there. So, no, everybody else is very... And they're appreciative and so forth like that of moving of whatever we can give them. And you say 930 did move up. They did ask for a little bit more.
Am I reading this right? For the veterans mileage, am I following across? $6,000?
Well, you consider what the cost is nowadays, and that's based strictly on what we anticipate based on what the IRS guidelines are for mileage reimbursement, too. And I assure you, Brian, Sandy, you would probably be... Brian does a lot more than what's in here for veterans in our community. Bill, you'd probably agree with that.
Yeah. So, I'll just say that one trip, one trip to the hospital in Newington, the VA hospital, I think is 110 or 115 miles round trip.
Yeah.
And so, if he does that twice a week, you know, he's putting 800 miles in his car a month just for that two trips. And he does way more than the two trips. So...
I know. He's very active.
Yeah. And he has never asked for this in the past, and this is something that Kevin realized and realized we needed to... You know, and it's an uncompensated position, period. He doesn't get any, you know, money for that. So... Any concerns? And here, again, if somebody... If something comes up, in the meantime, we do have time to look into it. But, I've done pretty, you know, Karen Cher isn't there because they're, you know, they haven't requested. They have a very good source of donations and so forth, so there's nothing there from them. Every time I see Pat, all she does is say thank you for the ARPA money and let them basically have a... And here, again, it is a town building, so yeah, but we should have it in good shape. So... Any comments on that? Any further?
Yeah. This, to me, is like the senior center. It's something that it's a core of what we do. We're supporting the citizens or, you know, town members. And it seems like $59,000. Is that what it is?
$39,000 compared to a budget of, you know, it just seems like such a tiny little piece. And the thing is, most of these, you never hear them asking. I mean, they just, you know, they're... You get... We get letters saying, thank you so much. We appreciate it and whatnot. And, you know...
Some of them also did receive money through the ARPA, you know?
Yes. I know we did give some to... And ARPA money that applied for it, too.
So, I did total that because I was just... And we did keep it separate, you know, as Ann knows and I know. We kept that separate last year, thinking that this was, you know, a sort of base amount to give these organizations and 501(c)(3)C's. But then, you know, separately have the ARPA distribution. And that ARPA distribution was just to the organizations on here that received the base amount. It was $241,127, not counting that amount to Historical Society and Library, which we'll now revert that to the pot. But, so that was great. And but, that's fine. They were separate things. But, I just wanted to get some perspective, too, that sometimes you feel like it's nothing. But then, in recent history, we have augmented one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of these organizations with ARPA funds. So, that's a good thing.
Are these all 501(c)(3)C's?
Not all, I don't think. Not sure about... How about this?
Not sure.
The cemeteries are 501(c)...
I would guess Brian's not.
Brian's... No, I'm sure...
It's not. Yeah, definitely not.
Safe Futures, East Line Historic Society, probably...
I guess maybe with the...
There'd be a few.
And what about the scholarship?
No, the scholarship. That's just our scholarship. The town, basically, on behalf of the board of selectmen of the town, we give $1,000 for a scholarship. So...
Yeah, that might be with the way that school prices are going up, that might be one of the ones that we'd wanna bump.
Yes. I actually... I actually, yeah, was thinking.
Cause $1,000 today.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Actually, it's been $1,000 since I was on the Board of Education, which goes back...
Please for books.
Would... I wouldn't mind seeing that. Would we like to see that? Roseanne, you come up with the number. You're with the educator. Let's...
Well, generally speaking, in the awards, we do in increments of 500. So, 1,500 or 2,000 would be within the range of what our bigger donors are giving now. I think Rotary's up to 2,000. And we do specifically try to choose somebody who's going... Who's shown an interest and then plans to go on to do something with government. If we can't, if we don't have a good candidate, then we go with somebody who's going to be a history major or something like that in that general area or the area of public service.
We could... We can move it up to 2,000? Okay. I don't think we need to move it. We can do that. We'll just do that because as we move forward...
Maybe for two students.
One and one. Yeah, we could. Yeah, that's something we could discuss later.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yes.
I think, you know, we need to make a decision on that because everything's been moved up so much in terms of what we have to have in for data for scholarship. So...
But this is for next year, right?
So, we could do...
This would be for the following... This wouldn't be for...
So, this wouldn't be...
Yeah.
Wouldn't be this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can discuss that. Yeah, we got time to discuss that. I was thinking the same thing, you know, you, Roseanne. We gotta do this soon, but we don't. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're also... Okay. And the other...
I noticed on line number 930 that that's a big jump from 650 to 1,700. Did we receive a particular request letter or anything?
Yeah. I had that same question.
Is that 930? I mean, that's...
930.
But it's 929, I think.
929, in fact.
Yeah, that's based on... They actually...
It's Southeastern Connecticut.
Yeah, the Sexual Assault Crisis Center, Eastern Connecticut.
Crisis Center.
It says 650, and then, in the documentation, it says no increases or increased requests.
But I think it seemed to me that the narrative was a little behind in time. Like, some of it was outdated. Right.
I tried updating the newer ones, and then any ones that have statistics, I tried...
All right. Let's... We'll take another look at that one.
But that number, if it's 1,700, those numbers are from the sheets, the request sheets.
Okay.
So, it's 1,700.
Okay. But we'll verify that.
But these are new. These are new, too. I mean, what we had coming in here this evening was the previous version. So...
We usually get a letter that describes. We usually do get, if they're new requests, we usually do.
Well, yeah, for that one, since that one does show an increase, let's... We'll get that. We have all the...
As a percentage, it's a large increase, but I mean, it's not...
Dollar-wise, it's not much. Yeah. Okay. Good point. Any other concerns under... And here we go. We can revisit this, too. So... Okay. Well, we're finishing up right at 7 o'clock for...
That's amazing.
Yeah. I'll take a motion to adjourn this special meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.